Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson, here.
Bray.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Orr.
Here.
Well done. Vlad is here too.
Need Vlad too.
Here.
That's okay. It doesn't really matter.
We don't really need me here. In fact, I might just turn it on over and head out. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you'd remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Scott Sampson from Rocky Mountain Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this great country that we live in, and we thank you for the city of Pocatello. And Lord, we ask that you will bless each council member, each one who's here today, that you will guide the words and the wisdom that we need from you. And Father, we ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from March 16, 2017 budget development meeting and the April 6, 2017 executive session. B, treasurer's report. Council may wish to consider the treasurer's report from March showing cash and investments as of March 31, 2017. Joyce, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Joyce Stoshine, Chief Financial Officer for the City. Tonight I'm presenting the treasurer's report for the month of March 2017. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 88 percent of the city's monies totaling $37,453,713. Total long-term investments represent 12 percent of the city's monies, which are $5,318,834. For a total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $42,772,547. This amount is down $2,568,973 for the month of March. On page two of the report, I've highlighted key cash receipts for the month. For the Transit Center, we received a federal grant of $96,564. Water lease revenue, $200,000. And then the remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the city. Page three of the report is on the trust funds. There we report on the total cash and cash equivalents for the trust funds, which are Total long-term investments, $4,772,546. For a total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments of $6,027,516. Total cash receipts for the month, $141,568. Total cash disbursements, $57,206. And a net change in long-term investments of a decrease of $99,880. For an overall reported decrease of $15,518 for the month of March. On page four of the report, I have listed all the fund cash balances with the net change for the month. Here I highlight the general fund, which is at $9,491,250 at the end of March. On page five of the report, I provide you with discussion and analysis for your review. And on page six of the report, we provide the five-year trend for all cash balances for all funds. And this is our strongest cash reporting position for the past five years, which is March of 2017. And again, general fund is at $9,491,250. We have three negative cash balances. $114,000 negative in the Transit Fund, which is covered by pending grant reimbursements. And then in the debt service fund, we have a negative $55,871. This is covered by tax remittances for the animal shelter bond, which should be received in July. And then in the CDBG Fund, the entitlement block grant fund, we have a negative $36,942. And this is also covered by grant reimbursements to come in. This concludes my report.
Any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda C, bus purchase price correction transit. Council approved the purchase of up to six medium-duty cutaway buses on March 16, 2017. The approval unit price was $90 less than the actual bid price due to a topographical error. The approval price was $71,673.50 per unit, but the actual bid was $71,763.50 per unit. The executive summary and the bid tabulation showed the correct price. D, 2017 public auction agreement, Primetime Auctions Incorporated. Council may wish to approve the mayor to sign an agreement with Primetime Auctions Incorporated to conduct the 2017 public auction for the city of Pocatello to be held on May 13, 2017. Primetime will receive a buyer's premium and an $895 reimbursement for advertising the auction. The funds for this auction expense are paid from the auction proceeds. E, council decision, annexation near Butte and Clearwater Streets. Council may wish to adopt its decision to approve the annexation of a parcel of land comprised of approximately 74.88 acres owned by Pocatello Development Company, Ted and Janice, Janice Crandall, David Lowery and Michelle Russell, and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. The parcel is located east of Butte and Clearwater Street, east of Satterfield Drive, and east of Legacy Drive. It will be zoned residential low-density RL with a comprehensive plan designation of residential.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
You'll start by the maker of the motion.
Thank you.
Moore.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number four, communications and proclamations. We have one proclamation, but before we do that, it looks like we had a scout walk in. Are you here to work on a merit badge of some sort?
Yeah.
Would you like to stand up and tell us what troop you're in?
I'm from Lincoln Page. I'm in troop three or four from the Central Region War. And I'm working on my citizenship and community merit badge.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Not related to that guy next to you.
So we'll move on to... He didn't know what to say. He was speechless. We'll move on to the proclamation. The proclamation will be read by Councilmember Gary Moore. It's on Arbor Day.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Mayor Brian C. Vlad, Mayor of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim April 28, 2017 as Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. He also urges all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of future generations.
You want to say it? No. No. Anyway. Good for you. Check his forehead. Yeah. Okay. That's fine. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings that should be called to their attention. On April 27, at 9:00 a.m. will be a budget development meeting. May 4 will be, at 9:00 a.m. will be a budget development meeting. May 4 will also be a regular city council meeting at 6:00 p.m. May 11, at 9:00 a.m. will be a study session followed by a budget meeting. Other events, the community recreation center hours of operation have changed for spring and summer. The center will be closed on Sundays through October 15. April 22, Run With The Big Dogs event, contact the animal services for more information. The animal shelter will be closed to allow staff and volunteers to participate in the fun run. May 6, Portnoy Valley Fun Run Series starts with the Law Day Run. Join Mayor Vlad in this fun run event. Contact Parks and Rec... Who wrote this? Come on. Contact the Parks and Recreation. I might have a beef with our Parks and Recreation Director.
I asked. They said you were running again.
I am. But anyway, if you have information, contact the Parks and Recreation, please. May 6 will also be the community cleanup at 8:30. From 8:30 to 10:00 a.m., I understand Councilmember Jim Johnston will be cooking pancakes for the public, free to the public. Nothing's free. You're going to end up having to go clean stuff up, but you can come and have a breakfast on Jim.
I'm not the only one cooking, am I, Mark?
I may be the only one there.
You may be the only one there, it sounds like. May 8 through 11 is National Water Week. 26th Annual Open House will be held at the Water Department, 1889 North Arthur Street. Okay, we added a whole bunch of these things. April 29, from 3 to 6, another event. If you're bored on April 29, it's your own fault. April 29, 3 to 6, Community Picnic. You can get a free breakfast and a free lunch on the same day.
No.
It'll be May 6.
Oh, May 6 and April 29. I'm sorry.
That's...
Got it close. From 3 to 6 will be a Community Picnic at ISU, the Quad. April 29 also is the Bengal Auction. The Athletic Booster Bengal Auction will be held also on April 29. HP Symposium from 9:30 to 4:00 p.m. at the Wood River Room in ISU Sub, and that is free to the public.
And if they don't know what HP is, that's Historic Preservation.
Historic Preservation.
Okay.
Thank you. Did I miss anything? I did. Reminders, annual spring cleanup at the city cemeteries continues. Crews are removing and discarding all flowers and decorations. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. As a reminder, the month of May, dog licenses will be half-price. Did I miss anything? Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on. I might add right here that agenda item number seven has been pulled from the agenda, and so we will not hear that. We'll move to agenda item six. Short Platte Dolby Estates. Neighbor Works Pocatello, represented by Chris Street of HLE Incorporated, submitted an application to subdivide approximately 0.58 acres into three residential lots located at the intersection of Jason Avenue and Dolby Street. Staff recommends approval with approval of the request with conditions outlined in the staff report.
And Mayor. Councilman Orr, if this meets the criteria of city ordinance, as I move, we approve the short platte for Dolby Estates with staff conditions. Second.
We have a motion by Orr and a second by Bray. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Orr.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, as I just said, has been pulled from the agenda, so we'll move on to agenda item number eight. FAA Grant Application Airport Improvements. Council may wish to approve a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, under the Airport Improvement Program in the amount of $998,437, and if awarded, allow the mayor to sign documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. The purpose of the grant is to design a taxi lane, reconstruction pavements, maintenance on Runways 321 and 1735, and taxiways B and C, acquisition of snow removal equipment, and geotechnical exploration of Runway 321. The grant will require a local match of 6.25 percent for the total project cost to be funded using airport passenger facilities, PFC funds.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the grant application. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, Declaration of Surplus Property 2017 Auction. Council may wish to declare items identified as surplus property to be sold at the city's auction, or city's annual auction on May 13, 2017. City departments submitted lists of items that they consider surplus, and these items were reviewed by other departments. The items to be considered as surplus are not needed by any other departments within the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bray.
I move that we declare surplus property and authorize the auction.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, Fort Hall Replica Pocatello Junction Facilities, Bannock County Historical Society. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding the Fort Hall Replica Pocatello Junction Facilities. A, approve a memorandum of agreement with Bannock County Historical Society to expand the society's oversight and operation responsibilities for the facilities as presented in the April 13, 2017 study session. And B, adopt a resolution assigning the Fort Hall Replica Commission to be part of the Bannock County Historical Society as a committee to preserve the commission's opportunities and continued contributions to the replica.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Adamson.
Was there a question before I made the motion?
No, I just...
Oh, okay. I would move that we approve the agreement with Bannock County Historical Society in item A, and that we adopt the resolution in item B.
Does not have a question. Second.
So we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Were we just goofing off down there when you had a question?
No, it was directed to Councilwoman Adamson, which we can address later.
Okay. Then Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Concessions License Agreement Ross Park Aquatics Complex. Council may wish to consider approving a concessions license agreement with Ross Park Drive-In, subject to legal department review, for assuming operations of the Ross Park Aquatics Complex concession stand from the city for the 2017 season.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the agreement. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Adamson.
That was Bray.
Oh, she beat me.
She beat me.
She's quieter, but I'm closer than you are. That's why I heard...
Maybe a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
John, were there multiple people that applied for this concession situation?
Oh, that's okay. So...
Mayor and council members, John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director, Councilman Johnston, no, there wasn't. I actually specifically sought to work with Ross Park Drive-In because of their proximity to the aquatics complex. I thought it would be a nice, kind of a natural progression for them to assume those operations, so didn't really have to look any further than that. It'll be a good fit.
Do you think we come under any condemnation for not having sought other bidders?
I don't think so. I'm comfortable that Ross Park is the right choice. With their proximity to the aquatics complex, also as a courtesy to their business, I wouldn't want to bring another vendor in to compete with them. I wanted to give them first opportunity.
I know. There's no legal impediment to doing it this way.
Okay. That's what I was really concerned about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion by Moore and a second by Adamson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, State and Local Agreement and Resolution Benton Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project Engineering. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and authorize execution of an agreement between Idaho Transportation Department and the city of Pocatello for the city's estimated share of construction costs associated with the Benton Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, subject to legal department review. The amount of the agreement is $284,058, which is in the city's estimated share of the cost for the construction and is available in Fund 70 and Fund 3 to cover this commitment. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the state local agreement and that we make this subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Local Professional Services Agreement Alameda Road and Jefferson Avenue Intersection Project Engineering. Council may wish to authorize execution of an agreement between Bionomics Environmental Incorporated and the city of Pocatello for the Alameda Road and Jefferson Avenue Intersection Project. Under this agreement, Bionomics Environmental will amend the cultural resources report by evaluating nine properties adjacent to the proposed sound wall. The cost of the work is $13,200, which will be paid by the state of Idaho. The city has already paid the match, and no additional funds will be required. The project is scheduled for completion in 2017.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the agreement. Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Bray. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Moore.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Orr.
Not yet.
No.
Okay. Agenda item 14 is an ordinance. Agenda item 14A, An Ordnance Rezoning Approximately .09 Acres of Property Located Approximately One Quarter Mile East of Philbin Road and South of Quinn Road. From residential medium, single-family RMS to residential high-density RH. Public hearings on this matter were held on May 15, 2015, and June 4, 2015. How would, Council, how would you like this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray.
Mayor, I move that ordinance, agenda item number 14A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Rich, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, municipal corporation of Idaho, changing the designation of zone of .09 acres of property located approximately quarter-mile east of Philbin Road and south of Quinn Road, Pocatello, Idaho, from residential medium-density, single-family RMS to residential high-density RH, more particularly described as follows. A parcel of land located northwest one-quarter of Section 16, Township 6, south, range 3-4 east, Boise Meridian, Bannock County, Idaho, described as follows. Commencing at the west 116th corner of the north lane of said Section 16, being marked by a railroad spike as described in corner permutation and filing record instrument number 762802, in the records of Bannock County, Idaho, then south, 0 degrees of 15 minutes 59 seconds west, base of bearing per central meridian of the east zone of the Idaho State Plan Corridor System, along the west 116th lane of said Section 16, a distance of 386 feet, thence leaving said west 116th line of said Section 16, and heading south, 89 degrees 52 minutes 40 seconds, west a distance of 134.13 feet to a point beginning, then south, 33 degrees 8 minutes 20 seconds, west a distance of 26.20 feet, thence north, 52 degrees 11 minutes 16 seconds, west of a distance of 319.32 feet, then south, 56 degrees 53 minutes 39 seconds, east a distance of 318.26 feet to the point of beginning, providing that the official zoning map be amended to incorporate this rezoning, providing for the repeal of all ordinances of conflict herein, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law. The rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? Shawnee.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes.
Thank you. 14B, An Ordnance Rezoning Approximately 37,190 square feet of property located at 4175 Hawthorne Road, from residential medium, single-family RMS to residential commercial-professional RCP. Public hearings on this matter were held on May 11, 2016, and June 2, 2016. Council, how would you like this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance, agenda item number 14B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Orr.
Yes. Rich, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, municipal corporation of Idaho, changing the designation of zone of 37,190 square feet of the property located at 4175 Hawthorne Road, Pocatello, Idaho, from residential medium-density, single-family RMS to residential commercial-professional RCP, more particularly described as follows. Lot 1, Block 7, Ward Park subdivision, first addition, Bannock County, Idaho, providing that the official zoning map be amended to incorporate this rezoning, providing for the repeal of all ordinances of conflict herein, herewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law. The rule requiring the order to be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, should the ordinance pass. Shawnee.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Moore. Thank you.
Agenda item 14C, an ordinance which annexes a parcel of land comprised of approximately 74.88 acres owned by Pocatello Creek Development Company, Ted and Janice Crandall, David Lowery, and Michelle Russell, and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. This parcel is located east of Butte Street and Clearwater Streets, east of Satterfield Drive, and east of Legacy Drive. It will be zoned residential low-density RL with a comprehensive plan designation of residential. Council, how would you like this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance agenda item number 14C be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
That was fantastic. I was honestly just thinking, it's great we've got Bray here tonight because he's the only one willing to do this, and then we got a second that quick. We've got a motion by Bray and a second by Council President Brown. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Orr?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys are in for a treat. Rich, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho annexing and zoning a parcel of land extending the city corporate boundaries east of Butte and Clearwater Streets, east of Satterfield Drive, and east of Legacy Drive, and more particularly described as follows. A tract of land located in Section 7, Township 6, South Range 35 East, Boise Meridian, Bannock County, Idaho, described as follows. Commencing at the north-quarter corner of Section 7, Township 6, South Range 35 East, Boise Meridian, said corner being marked by a two-inch aluminum cap monument marked LS-9er42 as per corner permutation, recorded as instrument number 9er4011573 in the official records of Bannock County. Then south, 89 degrees 52 minutes 32 seconds east basis of the bearing per Central Meridian of the east zone of the Idaho State Plan Plane Coordinate System, a distance of 949.49 feet along the north line of Section 7 to a point on the present city of Pocatello city limits as described in ordinance number 29er35, recorded as instrument number 21409er836 in the official records of Bannock County, from which the northeast corner of Section 7 bears south, 89 degrees 52 minutes 32 seconds east a distance of 1,695.44 feet. Said corner being marked by a five-eighth inch diameter rebar with aluminum cap marked LS-9er42 per corner perpetuation recorded as instrument number 9er4012405 in the official records of Bannock County, said point being the point of beginning. Then continuing along the north line of Section 7 and leaving the present city of Pocatello city limits, south 89 degrees 52 minutes 32 seconds east a distance of 530.32 feet. Then south, 2 degrees 45 minutes 28 seconds west a distance of 3,296 feet points... 3,296.61 feet to a point of the existing city of Pocatello limits as described in ordinance number 2786, recorded as instrument number 20526077 in the official records of Bannock County.
I told you, you were in for a treat.
Yeah, this is, that was page one. Then following the existing city of Pocatello limits boundary over the remainder of the course, then north, 89 degrees 57 minutes 54 seconds west along the north line of the land described in said ordinance, a distance of 589.50 feet to the current east boundary of line of the city of Pocatello as described in ordinance number 29er64, recorded as instrument number 21602839er in the official records of Bannock County. Then following the eastern and northerly boundary of the land described in said ordinance over the following four corners. Number one, north, 7 degrees 25 minutes 50 seconds west a distance of 435.30 feet. Number two, south, 80 degrees 32 minutes 29 seconds west a distance of 347.22 feet. Three, north, 7 degrees 25 minutes 50 seconds west a distance of 252.79 feet. Four, south, 84 degrees 14 minutes 22 seconds west a distance of 680.88 feet to a point of the easterly boundary line of the Crestview Park 2nd Edition, a subdivision recorded as instrument number 9er10079er83 in the official records of Bannock County, said point being on the east boundary line of the current city of Pocatello limits per ordinance number 2363, recorded as instrument number 9er1005572 in the official records of Bannock County. Then following the eastern and northerly boundary lines of the city of Pocatello limits as described in ordinance over the following three courses. North, 7 degrees 20 minutes 48 seconds west along the east boundary line of the Crestview Park 2nd Edition, a distance of 335.15 feet to the northeast corner of said subdivision, said point being the same as the southeast corner of a parcel of land belonging to Ted S. Candrell and Janice M. Candrell per deed recorded as instrument number 21200456 in the official records of Bannock County. Two, south, 82 degrees 34 minutes 10 seconds west following along a boundary line common to said parcel and the north boundary line of Crestview Park 2nd Edition, a distance of 42.28 feet. Three, north, 7 degrees 20 minutes 48 seconds west following along a boundary line common to said parcel and the east boundary line of Crestview Park 2nd Edition, a distance of 120 feet to a point on the southerly boundary line of Greenfield Heights 2nd Edition, a subdivision recorded in the official records of Bannock County, instrument number 803414. Then following along the southerly and easterly boundary lines of Greenfield Heights 2nd Edition over the following four corners, excuse me, four courses, courses. Number one, north, 82 degrees 34 minutes 10 seconds east a distance of 322.66 feet. Two, north, 7 degrees 25 feet, that's 25 minutes 50 seconds west a distance of 365.02 feet to a point of the north right-of-way line of Butte Street. Three, south, 82 degrees 34 minutes 10 seconds along the right-of-way line of Butte Street, a distance of 27.91 feet to a point of the current city of Pocatello limits boundary line as described in ordinance number 2258, recorded as instrument number 816732 in the official records of Bannock County. Four, north, 7 degrees 25 minutes 50 seconds west along the east boundary line of the land described in said ordinance, a distance of 120 feet to a point on the southerly boundary line of Greenfield Heights 4th Edition, a subdivision recorded in the official records of Bannock County as instrument number 9er2016716, said point being on the southerly boundary line of the current city of Pocatello city limits as described in ordinance number 2415, recorded as instrument number 9er2012082 in the official records of Bannock County. Then following along the southerly and easterly boundary line of Greenfield Heights 4th Edition and the land described in said ordinance over the following five courses. One, north, 82 degrees 34 minutes 10 seconds east a distance of 62.12 feet. Two, north, 7 degrees 25 minutes 50 seconds west a distance of 120 feet. Three, north, 82 degrees 34 minutes 10 seconds east a distance of 38.59 feet. Four, north, 7 degrees 25 minutes 50 seconds west a distance of 170 feet. Five, north, 82 degrees 34 minutes 10 seconds east a distance of 20 feet to the southwest corner of Greenfield's Metals Division Number 2 with subdivision recorded in the official records of Bannock County as instrument number 21319er574, said point also being on the southern boundary line of the current city of Pocatello city limits as described in ordinance 29er11, recorded as instrument number 21214482 in the official records of Bannock County. Then following along the line described in said ordinance over the following two courses. North, 84 degrees 34 minutes 10 seconds east following along the southerly boundary line of Greenfield Metals Division Number 2, a distance of 202.59 feet to an angle point on a southerly boundary line of the said Greenfield Metals Division Number 2, said point being in common with an angle point of a parcel of land belonging to David Lowery and Michelle Russell per quitclaim deed recorded as instrument number 215009er55 in the official records of Bannock County. Two, north, 88 degrees 57 minutes 22 seconds east a distance of 198.56 feet to a point of southerly boundary line of the current city of Pocatello limits as described in ordinance number 29er35, recorded as instrument number 21409er836 in the official records of Bannock County. Then following the southerly and easterly boundary lines of the current city of Pocatello limits over the following two courses. One, north, 77 degrees 59 minutes 14 seconds east a distance of 736.4 feet. Four, 736.40 feet. Two, north, 0 degrees 19 minutes 23 seconds west a distance of 1,309.03 feet to the point of beginning, containing 74.88 acres more or less. Providing for the clerk to file a certified copy of the ordinance to the Idaho State Task Commission and with the Bannock County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessors in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 5223 and 632215, providing for said land to be zoned residential low-density RL and the comprehensive plan map designation be residential, and providing for this ordinance to be in full full force and effect from and after its passage approval publication according to law. The rule dispensing that an ordinance be read three on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
Did you want to hear that again? I declare that the final reading of the ordinance, if the ordinance shall pass.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Orr?
Well, happy day, yes.
It's good to get that one past us. Okay, agenda item, thank you. The agenda item 15 is discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting. Unmanaged brought forward under this agenda item, items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and 15 minutes for this agenda item. We will go ahead and get started. Cindy Moore?
My name is Cindy Moore, and I reside at 1415 North Harrison Avenue. You should recognize me, I'm the lady on Harrison with the fence in the shared driveway. Last year I came here because of that fence in my shared driveway. Recently, I have learned that the deed that I produced last March is what stopped the fence from him from fencing the rest of the driveway. The judge says that on this deed, because it states he is not exempt from covenants, easements, rights, and rights away apparent or of record. But all I was told is that it had to be an easement in writing down in Bannock County. There's none, because it doesn't need to be. The judge said it's a specific kind of easement, and I was awarded that he cannot fence in between the two houses at this point. But it was for a small claims court for a car accident because he put a pole in and caused damage to my vehicle. So, he couldn't touch the fence up top, okay? But this deed that I brought in last year should have. And so, I'm a little disappointed, and I've kind of lost faith in my city hall at this point, and I'm going to tell you why. This is reason one. The fence I brought to the attention, Mr. Transcend, has not done his job. He's never walked the property. If he has, I would love to see the inspection report that was hanging on the garage that he was supposed to take down at the time of inspection and acceptance. But I don't think he's got it because he's never walked the property. But that's my biggest problem. But after this, dealing with the cops and code enforcement over the last year and a half, I have to tell you, oh, my God. Code enforcement, worthless. They come out, tell me I can't park my cars on my back lawn unless they're on cement locks. But yet, the neighbors allowed to rip out a cement block and park a vehicle right there with no cement blocks underneath it, another one in the middle of the yard, debris all over the yard, and yet, my yard has to be cleaned so the man can sit in his bedroom and look out a camera at my backyard and say, "What can I do to her today?" Okay? So, I've called the cops for trespassing. I was told I couldn't press trespassing charges for his worker coming around the fence and spray painting a big red line right down the property line after the fence was up. There was no point. Even the officer saw this, but he was trying to help. I understand that. If the property rights go all the way to the alley, my trespassing charges are out, but so is the fence. Well, I still have to get in front of a judge, a higher-up judge. Now I get to spend three grand for an attorney, two to 10 grand to fight this, when I shouldn't even had to had somebody done their job, especially when a cop and a taxpayer asked Mr. Transcend to come out to the property and look at it, and all I was told by him is, "I don't have to, and I'm not going to." And I find that appalling for a city employee to tell a taxpayer that he doesn't have to do his job. The last time the cops were out to my house, same week the guy out in Chubik was getting prosecuted for snowblowing snow onto his property for his neighbors. My neighbor's worker decided to go out there, and I got a call from my neighbor to tell me this, that he was snowblowing all the snow over the six-foot fence into my driveway where I park. Also, all the snow by his back door and porch and whatnot, he snowblowed it all onto my door, my back steps, the entire side of my house, and my whole driveway was covered.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll move on to Idaho Laura.
Ma'am, don't leave. Would you, ma'am, would you please stay until after the meeting?
Is there a point?
I'd like to see your document.
Before I get started, I just want to make it clear, there were five interruptions last time I spoke. It would be the courtesy that you do not do that again, and it allowed me to have my three minutes of expression freely. Thank you. Okay, Ruth? So, first of all, I just want to make it clear again, you know, if I ask a question, then it's just one for your thought, not something we responded to. So, in my attempt, of course, to support the temple here in Pocatello, because bring us your poor, bring us your... Bring us your starving or hungry. Anybody wants to quote that better than me, it's free to do that sometime. But we need a symbol. And I worked in Utah, I lived in Utah, and the symbol of the church, what finally helped is in the uranium cleanup, the uranium issues down there in Utah was substantial. And since I still work with people in Utah, we're hoping that the temples with their shiny beacons over there will remind people and protect our brethren and sister from the uranium contaminations and from Rexburg to the border of all this material. And so, for me, it's a nice triangle on top that says, "Fall out, please." Bring your safety out, equipment, bring your Geiger counter, good ones. Okay, also, I have another issue about when I'm testifying at a hearing, and when I testify, what I bring up is completely ignored by whoever is speaking. They never address what I have to say. So, I noticed that, of course, Alameda Jefferson is on the agenda issues again. You're welcome to hire me, you know, to help out on those issues, make things run more smoothly, or you can wait till maybe we remove some even up there where you guys are right now. So, those are some issues that I'll be concerned about. Sound wall, I guess that's an important environmental issue. Uranium blowing into the schools, being tracked into the heavenly stake, and that's not important. Just look at the data. We're in a community of denying science. So, if you don't deny science, why don't you come out Saturday and walk with us? Okay? I will welcome any of you there. Roads, 35 miles of roads we're going to do. I love how we continue to spend our taxpayers' money when I came here with billions of dollars to do it. I mean, we're going to have to dig them up, hopefully safely, but we're going to have to do all those, many of those roads. Don't think our equipment doesn't pick it up. It says, "Well, it's a uranium road." It's going to be the legacy of this community until we remove things, not cover up. Remember? Cleanup is the paradigm, not cover up. And with that, I'll leave you there to have a good weekend. Hope to see you Saturday. How did things? Hopefully, have a good day.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, that concludes everybody that would like to speak. So, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.